Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the July 1, 2013 meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectment. I invite you all to rise, to join us as we rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Some announcements, procedural announcements before we begin our agenda. If you have a cellphone or some other electronic device that creates noise, we ask that you silence it at this time or turn it off. There may be opportunities this evening for public comment. In those instances, we ask that you wait to be acknowledged by the chair and then come to, well, we usually have a lectern. Tonight it's a standalone microphone. You come to the microphone, identify yourself for the record, and direct all of your comments through the chair. Please refrain from any private conversations in the room because they can disturb the proceedings and as well, well, this evening we have doors and outside the room isn't so much of an issue. Please remember, we do have a speaker's policy and you will be held to that if you do choose to speak. If you leave before our meeting is adjourned, remember, the meeting is not adjourned and we still have business to conduct, so we ask that you do so quietly. If you choose to record the meeting, we ask that you identify yourselves if you're recording audio, and if you are recording video, you will need to ask the board's permission. And with that, the first item on our agenda, announcements and proclamations. We have a proclamation for Eagle Scout Henry Frost Abrams. Anyone wish to read this, or shall I?
I think you are the appropriate Eagle Scout to read it for us.
All right, then. Whereas Henry Frost Abrams of Boy Scout Troop 42 has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting. And whereas Henry Frost Abrams met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community. And whereas, the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for Special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank. And whereas Henry Frost Abrams is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privilege, now therefore we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, a selectman of the town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim, Saturday, July 13, 2013, is Henry Frost Abrams' day.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And we have a proclamation for the Children's School of Science Day. Anyone like to read this one?
Whereas the Children's School of Science was founded 100 years ago in August of 1913 in Woods Hole, Massachusetts, the village of Falmouth, and in 2013 celebrates its centennial. Whereas the mission of the Children's School of Science is to encourage a love and appreciation of science through inquiry-based learning. Whereas the school employs frequent field trips and hands-on classroom study to provide children the opportunity to explore nature, become adept at observation, and discover the rules that govern natural processes. Whereas students at the school benefit from the renowned scientific institutions in Woods Hole and the unique living classroom created by the complex biology and geology of Cape Cod. Whereas through the entire community's volunteerism, commitment, and support, the Children's School of Science has shaped the lives of generations of students by encouraging them to investigate nature and think critically about the world around them. Now therefore we, Brent Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, a selectman of the town of Falmouth, by authority vested in us to hereby call upon the citizens of Falmouth to celebrate the centennial of the Children's School of Science and proclaim July 20, 2013, Children's School of Science Day.
So move.
Motion.
At this point, I should disclose I am an employee of this institution. I don't think it changes the proclamation, but just to be clear.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Unanimous. Do we have any other announcements to be made at this time?
I'm not sure if it's appropriate time. I should announce that I did attend and represent the Board of Selectment, the ABCC, meeting. The only reason I want to present, make the announcement tonight is that the ABCC did change our position on the Murphys Package Store in West Falmouth, and they ruled against our provision that the front door within the parking lot be closed. And so they're doing what they can to be able to open before the Fourth of July weekend. And so if you go by there, you may notice it was against what we decided, but the ABCC overruled us and they will be allowed to open with that door in the parking lot, the front by the post office being allowed to be used.
I just might want to add to that, that it was not remanded back to the board either. It was just decided by them and they determined that it should just be implemented.
It's actually, there is no trace in the second appeal, there can be no remand back to the board. It is then up to them to decide what they want.
Just one other announcement. On July the ninth, Tuesday, July the ninth, at 5:30, the handicap ramp at Old Silver Beach will be dedicated to, you know, deceased member of the military, Officer Gallagher. And if those, anyone that could attend that dedication, again, it's 5:30 on Tuesday, the ninth of July, at Old Silver Beach.
Any other announcements?
Actually, now might be a good time. Go ahead.
I was informed that the, a development that the board entered into a LIP application with, the Holly Park Development in North Falmouth, is before the Zoning Board of Appeals this upcoming July 11. That, as you know, is an agreement and a packaged development plan with the town for a homeownership development. The proposal now is to amend that for a rental development, some changes in the site plan, and a change in the developer to TRI development. My recommendation is that group meet with the LIP Advisory Board and that the proposal come back to the Board of Selectmen, since you are a partner in that development. Our LIP Advisory Committee is short one person. I'm looking for possibly, if the board agrees tonight, a volunteer for this project so we can get a LIP Advisory Committee meeting together next week so we can give Mr. Galasso the advice that he needs to meet with the Board of Appeals. So if someone wants to volunteer, we're looking at a one, is a volunteer. Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch with you. Thank you very much.
Any other announcements? All right. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to interview, vote, and appoint committee members. And first on the agenda is for the Coastal Pond Management Committee, John Ross. Good evening. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be a member of this committee?
Sure. Well, been in West Falmouth since I was born, 75 years ago, and I've been a year-round resident for 19 years. I've been on the Board of Faces for, I don't know, more than 10 years, and I'm on the Board of the Buzzetts Bay Coalition. More importantly, I've sailed and fished all of Falmouth's harbors and waters, so I would like to get involved in this committee.
Questions from the board?
I have none. I'm familiar with Mr. Ross's qualifications for this board committee.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Ross, but I would say that as I read your application, I thought it's a perfect match. And so each thing that I would think about concerning any qualifications you have, you certainly told us, and I, so I have no questions that aren't answered right here, so.
Thank you.
Well, I really couldn't. We have a long acquaintance with John Ross, and not only in terms of water quality, but also the wastewater treatment plant, and all issues related to plumes emanating from the plant to Buzzetts Bay, and all of the issues around the coastal resources, which is what you are applying for now, so I think you would be an excellent fit.
I'm very familiar with Mr. Ross and all the good works that he does. I do have one question, though. The Coastal Ponds Group will be coming back with some recommendations, and they've already come to this board with some recommendations, that could curtail some boater access, meaning mooring access in certain locations. Are you willing to listen to those folks in each and every one of those inlets, because in fact, some of them may be aggrieved by what might ultimately happen to help protect these estuaries? And it's going to be really important to be able to have an open mind. Not only are we trying to balance, you know, Falmouth's future, but we're trying to balance for the folks who are here today, being able to use those locations for recreation. Can you elaborate on how you would be able to do that?
Definitely. I've been on the Board of the West Falmouth Boat Club for years, and we work with a harbor master on moorings, and in West Falmouth, we have 300 moorings, and a number of them are empty, which we think hopefully Greg will be able to do something about so that the waiting list will drop from 90 people, and the number one is 12 years. So I'm very familiar with what you're saying and in favor of hoping that we can accommodate people that are here now that need to have a mooring.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further questions? How would the board like to proceed? We have one vacancy to fill an unexpired term to June 30, 2016.
Make a motion to put the name and nomination.
Second.
So a motion and a second. Put John Ross as a name into nomination for the position expiring 6/30/16. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right.
I appreciate your time and your vote. I have to say that George Hampson has been a mentor to me on the quality of the water in West Falmouth, and he pushed me over the cliff to take this job. Thank you again.
All right. So we do have the name and nomination. We need to decide to confirm the name or not. I think, given that there's no other choices, I'll just call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It is unanimous. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
And we have two applicants for the Conservation Commission. We have Mario Di Gregorio and Michael Powers. Mr. Di Gregorio was recently appointed, and he is up for renewal, a term ending June 30, 2016. Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Hasn't been that long.
Yeah, it hasn't. Are there any questions from the board?
How many meetings have you been to since we appointed you?
I think I missed one meeting, but in two and a half months, I think my attendance rate's been not bad.
I didn't mean it in that way. I was just wondering, curious whether it's three, four, or five.
You know, I've been very impressed with this group. They're very dedicated, they're hardworking, Jennifer's a great conservation administrator. The board seems to know how to balance the interests of environmental protection and landowners' right to use their land, so. And in the two and a half months I've been on the board, there hasn't been a single project denied outright.
Any other questions? All right. I think we're all set at the moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. And we also have Michael Powers, who's currently an alternate member on the commission, and he is seeking one of the full positions. We have three open slots. I'm actually looking at this. Actually, I think there is a full position.
And two alternates.
And two alternates. Ah. We have a resume.
Just made his day.
Mr. Powers, could you share a little bit about yourself and what you've been doing for the last, I apologize.
66 years. I don't remember the first five or six.
That's fine. You've been a member, you've been an alternate member of the commission, however.
Yes, I have. I've been a member for about 16 months now.
Okay. Why don't you share with us what your experience on the commission and why you'd like to be a full member?
Sure. Going back a little bit further, my family owned land which contained wetlands, which gives me a perspective of applicants. I've been a civil engineer for 40 years and presented projects to various boards for some 30 states, so I'm pretty familiar with the process. And last, I've been a member for 16 months. I think I've missed one meeting. I've come to appreciate the hard work of the commission. It's about six hours a week. I'm pleased to do it. And the last reason for me wanting to be on the board is, at this point, I think I need to pay back to both my profession, engineering, and to the community I live in for giving service for all the good things that both have done for me. My family found Falmouth in about 1952, and I've been here ever since, on and off, so, and I plan to be here for some time.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one question, and I do remember your original interview. And in your original interview, we talked about your ability to be able to see other opportunities. Have you found, in other words, ways things can be done within the law and within the regulations? Have you found the regulations in your ability to be able to see, in the best of terms that I like to say, a good reason why something can be done versus the reason why it may not be able to be done?
Well, first of all, your Conservation Commission is put forth to enforce the regulations, and you have to be able to afford the, you know, stand in that position. And behind that also is fairness. You can't do for one applicant, not do for another applicant. So you're going to be very even-handed, I think of it. And you also have to be fair to all the good people in Falmouth who abide by our regulations at some hardship, hardship, excuse me. They live and they abide by the rules, and they do, and there are a limited number of people who don't abide by the regulations. And you're not being, if you ignore that deviant fear, you're not being fair to everybody who does. I think our board, I think Mario said it very well, and in the 16 months I've been, probably been before more Conservation Commissioners than I've sat on the other side of the table. I think our current board is exceedingly fair and works very hard to recognize the needs of first and foremost, the former, the environment. If we don't protect it, A, we're not following on our rural, our own regulations, and B, we're not protecting the most, we're not protecting Falmouth. Falmouth is just such a gorgeous place. I mean, I'm not altruistic. In 16 months, I've poked around gorgeous properties, just absolutely gorgeous properties, and had the right to see them and be there and enjoy them that I wouldn't have otherwise. And the right to keep the flavor of Falmouth as best as we can, I think, is very important. So I think I've done as best as I can to answer your question. Thank you.
I think when someone decides to volunteer and to be on any committee or commission, there is something about being a volunteer and being a paid employee. And I think there are many thoughts that you can have as a volunteer that you probably would not be allowed to say as a paid employee in many situations. So do you have that kind of a feeling and a passion that you want to be the volunteer and you want to be on this committee, and there isn't the money compensation, there's all that other wonderful part of being a volunteer?
Well, if you promote me, my salary would be doubled, so I appreciate that. I've asked myself that several times. There are 168 hours in a week, and at the end of that 168 hours, it's gone forever, you know? And I, it is, this job does require about, if you're going to do it, I think about six hours a week, come and go. And I gladly give those six hours and enjoy those six hours. So, and if you get to know me a little bit better, I don't think you have to worry me about, worrying about me not speaking my mind. You'll find I do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just, my guess, my question is, do you find that your engineering background really helps you not only be able to understand the regulations more, but to be able to interpret them and maybe help people understand why they're there and that they are there to really protect the environment?
Short answer is yes. I'll add, though, that there are a limited number of engineers who typically come before the Conservation Commission. The town is very fortunate. You've had a number of people who, engineers who come before the board, who put forth their applicant's desires and very straightforward recognizing our regulations and how they apply. And it's done in a very professional, straightforward manner. And everybody recognized that the engineer is a technical advocate for the applicant. And I think our, the people come before us are very good, and I think what I help contribute to the board is I understand the dynamics on the other side. And not only understand the math and the science and the regulations, but the human dynamics that are occurring between the applicant, who only wants to hear what he wants to hear, and what the regulations allow.
Other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much.
I'm pleased to be here.
Thank you.
I like your time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, because of the date, which is July the, you know, July the first, I would suggest that we take action on these applications this evening so that the Conservation Commission is not without some members. So I'd move to put both names into nomination, and in this case, Mr. Di Gregorio into nomination for a seat, an alternate seat expiring on 6/30/16, and Mr. Powers's name into application for a voting member with a term expiring 6/30/16.
All right, so that was motion.
Second.
All right. Just so everyone's aware, there are actually two full members' seats available on the Conservation Commission at this time. And it just, Mr. Schmidt just acknowledged it. Mr. Schmidt has been termed out, so there's that position, and then, of course, there's the position which Mr. Di Gregorio filled a few weeks ago for us, and he's seeking reappointment to that position. So we have two full positions. If we choose to move Mr. Powers up into the full position, there will be three alternate positions that are available. Right now, we have two alternates that are open.
My only question is that, and I know you're king on procedure, is that Mr. Di Gregorio applied this evening as an alternate, and Mr. Powers applied, I believe, as a voting member.
I thought Mr. Gregorio was appointed as a full member two months ago, and is just retaining as a full member.
That was my understanding. But I don't have that information here in the file. Madam Chair, perhaps you could clarify for us?
Thank you. Betsy Bladhulter. Yes, you're correct. Mario is a full member, and he's applying for another full term. And Mike has been on for 16 months, and he's applying because Ed can't be on anymore because he's at term limit. But since I'm here, could I make one more statement?
Is it in relation to our appointments?
It is.
Okay.
And it's just that I would like to, I like what you said about volunteers, and I'd like to point out that Ed was with us for three consecutive three-year terms, plus he was an alternate before that, so served for 10 years, and we really appreciate that. So both people tonight are applying for full terms. So then we'll be full, and then hopefully we'll get three alternates who can learn the ropes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll amend my motion, Mr. Chairman. My motion would be that we place both names in a nomination for terms expiring on the 6/30/16 for full voting members.
So we have the motion and the second to put both names into nomination. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous? All right. And again, because we have two individuals for two positions, I'll simply call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? None. All right. So unanimous, and congratulations to both of you. And the next interview, we have Design Review Committee, Linda Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be a member of the committee.
I can. I've been a resident for 54 years in Falmouth, 25 of which I have managed my family's properties, both residential and commercial, one of which is historic, the Queens Byway on the other end of Main Street. I'm on the Falmouth Housing Court Board, Friends of Fair Winds Board. I'm the president of my condo association at the Boatyard Condos. Very familiar with the town, and I'm interested in the signage and to maintain the integrity of the town.
Questions from the board?
It's this very last line that you have in your application, and when I read this earlier, I thought that's exactly what I think about the design committee. I think, I don't know that all towns have the same type of position for their town of what you can do with signs and flags and things of that type, and it shows if they don't have it. Because we can drive through those towns and we can tell that immediately. Then, when there is a committee, and it is volunteers, and I'm just going to read it out loud because it's just perfect for me. I believe there are certain guidelines that need to be met in the decision-making process in order for our town to remain aesthetically pleasing, and at the same time, to allow growth for local business. And I think that's the key to that look that you are, that you want to have your town, and I was very pleased to read that in your application.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Well, I guess, I'm sure you must have read the code, the design review code.
Yes.
What do you find in there, I mean, that might be really difficult to carry out in terms, I mean, people, if they want to sign, they want to sign, and sometimes people want a variance, and when that occurs, they have to come before the Board of Selectmen. Then we have to be the sort of arbitrator of that. But I know over the years, there has been an attempt and with some results in amending some of those bylaws. But do you think there's anything that could be done that might help businesses or help people better to understand the importance of a sign code and what it means to the community to have some regulations on them?
Well, I think the regulations are good as written. I think people have issues with the size, but that's what maintains the integrity of the town. I've sat in on a few meetings, and I was impressed with Art and Noah and the way that they conduct business and making suggestions, and I think it works pretty good.
So big is not necessarily better?
No. It is not. And I think it's, I think it's in place to have to come to the selectmen for variation on the way of size.
One of the issues we dealt with last year was the use of sandwich board signs without town, and the enforcement of that is all complaint-driven. We do not have someone who goes out and is hired to go and check them. But if you go around town, you'll notice that about half of them are not following the guidelines of the sign code. Do you think that's something the Design Review Committee should relook at the bylaw to make sure it actually fits better with what the use is of signs, or is there enforcement we should be doing instead?
Yes. I think we need to address it.
Ollie seems to be really good at it, and maybe bring those things to the Design Review Committee when she comes across violations, and maybe we can work something out. But the sandwich boards are, in my estimation, a problem. They don't look good.
Thank you.
Special events are one thing, but the constant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay.
I would move to put Linda Clark in nomination for the Design Review Committee. I think this is a term ending 6/30/16.
We actually have three vacancies. There is, there are two alternate terms that would expire June 30, 2014, and one full term that expires June 30, 2015.
So I would move nomination for full membership, June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Our name in nomination for the full term expiring June 30, 2015. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. And because we have one name for one nomination, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last interview this evening is the Energy Committee, David Jewitt.
Good evening.
Good evening. And you're seeking reappointment for a term that expires June 30, 2016. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself and?
I've been resident of Falmouth since 2000, and have about twenty years developing solar cell materials, and another twenty years developing materials for LEDs, and emphasis on energy conservation, both of those. And since I've moved here, we, we converted a cabin that we, that my in-laws built to energy-efficient, solar-powered house. And I think I've got some information in use, that could be useful to the committee. I've been involved in developing the ESCO program and selecting Train as your contractor.
Questions from the board?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Jewitt. It was rather controversial. This past winter, the board had taken a vote of how to move forward in regard to an issue with wind turbines. There was a member of your board that took a personal stand, but then the board, or at least was reported in the press, that the board supported that personal stand with a letter to the state, which went against the board of selectmen's recommendation. Did you participate in that recommendation?
I was not aware of the, the letter until after your meeting. And so that was not something that the, that the committee met on or discussed at all prior to that event. I think the, the ability of a person to have a personal opinion that's well-informed and against your policy is certainly reasonable.
Well, I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. Anyone's entitled to a personal opinion. This is, this is United States of America. My question, though, is, did, you're the only one I happen to have an opportunity to ask this. Subsequent to that vote, did, did your committee take a vote?
No.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
We did not take a vote. We did have a discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions from the board?
I have a separate question. David, what do you see are some of the goals for the Energy Committee for the coming year?
At the moment, we're focusing on revamping the, the policy statement that you've already developed in the past and approved, and to see if there's, there's improvements that we can make to that. Obviously, we're trying to stay in touch and support the ESCO process to the point as is appropriate and desired by the people who are, Paul Gentile and so forth, who are running that program. And then we're constantly looking for ways to save the town money.
I think the Energy Committee has done a lot of work on that already. And when Paul Gentile was here, setting all, and working with the town manager's office, setting goals for, for energy reduction, I, I think the committee's, would you say the committee's been successful so far in their efforts? Not that they've completed them, but?
I think we have a, the goal always recedes ahead of us. Whatever we, we succeed in implementing, we can always see further improvements that can be made. And your, your town management obviously has a lot of, of work to do in all sorts of areas, and this is one particular area of concern. So it, it doesn't look to be a, something that's going to disappear soon.
Do you see your committee's job as to implement the policies set by the board of selectmen, or to instruct the board of selectmen how, what policy they should be adopting?
I would, we, first of all, we're not in the implementation business. These two individuals implement your, your policies. We sometimes feel frustrated because we want to get out, but you can't do that. So we're more in the instruction, studying, providing information, goals, and, and recommendations.
I do have one question. If you could clarify for me your interpretation of, of the Energy Committee's role, I guess. What is, what is the role of the Energy Committee?
The role of the Energy Committee is to continually review and study the use of energy by the town and provide implementation ideas, goals, suggestions to the town and to the, the selectmen, because we're a committee for the selectmen.
Thank you. Any last questions from the board? Thank you.
I would move putting David Jewitt's name in for reappointment to the Energy Committee, the term ending June 30, 2016.
Second.
Motion and second, put his name into nomination. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Unanimous? And because Mr. Jewitt is the only applicant for the position available, I'll call for the vote, unless there's any discussion beforehand. All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. And that concludes our interviews this evening. Next item on our agenda is a request for a new all-alcoholic common victular license, Chef Roland's Catering. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that Chef Roland's Catering Incorporated doing business as Chef Roland's Catering is applied for a new all-alcoholic common victular license to be exercised at 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts. A hearing will be held in the selectmen's meeting room. I guess I have a procedural question about that, because we're not in the selectmen's meeting room. It has, perhaps this has not been properly noticed, then?
Or was properly noticed?
Properly noticed, but the venue is, is obviously incorrect. So I guess the question is, can we proceed at this time, or do we have a procedural issue here?
I would suggest that we do have the posting at Town Hall. If someone were to, to have gone to Town Hall, the meeting is properly posted at Town Hall, so that anyone that wanted to go to that meeting would have the ability to look at the bulletin board, the kiosk, and see that the venue has been changed to this location.
And posted three days ago.
Without a doubt.
Note that the agenda notes a change in venue as well, the agenda itself.
That is correct. The agenda does specifically state change in venue. All right, then if there's no objection from the board, then I think we can proceed with the hearing.
Hi, my name is Paul Glenn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here for, for the applicant. Pat Lamerand is here in the audience tonight. She is the applicant and, and the principal of Chef Roland's Inc. So this is Ballymead, where we're looking. 125 Falmouth Woods Road is, is Ballymead, and it's for the clubhouse and the area up there. And this board previously approved a new license up there back in the late spring, where the whole property was licensed. For business reasons, the Lamerands have chosen to have Pat be the sole, sole officer, stockholder of the corporation, and she's here today, and that's why we're back here. That's why we're back here tonight, to ask the board again for really the same application, but same location, same application, just Pat now is the principal of the business. And so this is Chef Roland's Catering. And Pat has worked there, there since 1996, and they employ forty to fifty people. Now, probably everybody here has been, attended one of their functions over the years. They've been around food and alcohol for a long time. Pat has worked there, managed the books, and managed the, the business since then. So up at Ballymead, they'd be employing a lot of people up there also. Probably more importantly, the nineteenth hole is not open, and we're coming to the summer season, and we're hoping that this board will allow the license, the all, the license to be approved up there again at, at Ballymead. And we're here for any questions that you have.
Mr. Jones?
Just that we do have recognition from the police department supporting, or not having any problems with the application, that there are no disqualifying information when conducting a query check.
Questions from the board?
I did, I, they just need to make a disclosure before she, disclose that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal license.
Okay.
So there was a license there previously to you purchasing. This is a purchase?
Well, there, there was, certainly there was a license up at Ballymead previously, but it lapsed last year. So this is an application for a new license, and that's what we're doing now. It's, it's not a transfer from the existing person, it's an application for a new license. And they just let it lapse. I'm not sure exactly what the reasons are why they let it lapse, but they did. And they haven't had, they haven't had a bar up there this year, you know, and the season's gone. In the spring, the Lamerands were here, and they talked about the menu that they'd have and, and how they're going to open it and liven the place up, and it's open to the public. I, I didn't think we'd have them do that again tonight, though. But they, they are anxious to, they are anxious to get open there, and it, and it's new, to answer your question, it's a new license.
I think I want to have a visual of what's happening there.
Okay.
I can see, I can see everything there at Ballymead. I understand the dining, I understand where the bar is, I understand who comes in from golfing.
Yep.
I, the only thing that you're asking for is to have a new, a license in your name, but everything else would basically remain the same, as it has been in previous years.
Well, the, the structure won't change.
No.
If that's what you mean, the structure stays the same. They, it, it may not be exactly the same as in previous years. I mean, your, your board here now would be licensing, giving them the ability to have alcohol with the restaurant. They may choose to vary the menu and have, have, have it that way. But it's, and they may choose not to use it at the beginning, you know, the first week or two, they may not occupy the whole area, which is, has about three hundred fifty seats in it.
I did notice the, the numbers that you had. Okay, so it's going to remain as a restaurant, as it has been?
Oh, definitely. Right. I, I see what you mean. There's no application for any entertainment licenses, if, if that's what you had in mind, that it, it'll be a restaurant. That's their business, is food. That's their business. And the business of Ballymead, among other things, is golf, and they need somebody to manage that nineteenth hole, really, is, is what this is about tonight, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
And it, Ballymead has had a long history, that location, for having an all-alcoholic liquor license. As a matter of fact, this license is more restrictive. At one point in time, Ballymead actually had a license to serve in the entire golf course. So this license does not provide for that at this time. So it, this?
It does. I, that's a conscious choice, that now they don't want.
I'm just saying that it is, it is more restrictive, and, and it's, it's an area where I've had folks call and say, how come I can't get a cold beer after I play a round of golf? Fortunately, someone's coming to do, meet that need.
I would move the request, request for a new alcoholic common. Before we make a motion, we do have to hear public comment. Any further comments from the board? Any further questions? All right, with that, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone, first, I'd like to start with anyone who is in favor of this application?
George Hampson, North Falmouth. Had plenty of events with Roland, and although he might not be the key piece, a person in charge of all of this, he's very, very particular, everything he does. And he makes a, an appointment with the person that's going to have the event, and so I'd like to speak in favor of this.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor of this application?
Yes, I'm Edward Schmidt. I happen to live in the Ballymead community. I hadn't known this was on your agenda tonight, so I'm just reacting to hearing about it on the spur of the moment here. But I certainly do feel compelled, as a resident, to speak in favor of this. And I can say that everybody I know, of course, it's a limited group, I don't speak for the community, but everybody I know in Ballymead is very excited to have Chef Roland coming in, and we really look forward to him coming in and really improving the operation that we have there, because we feel that has great potential, and we would like to see that realized. We think he's the guy who can do it. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition of this application? All right, hearing none. We have a motion to close the hearing. So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Hearing is closed. The board now needs to make a decision. We can?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the application. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Congratulations. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item on your agenda, discuss and revoke to approve a request for additional taxi permits. There is one annual and one seasonal that are being requested by Falmouth Taxi, 17 Water Street, Falmouth. Who's the applicant, or the applicant's representative? Yes. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Paul Moore from Falmouth Taxi.
All right. Mr. Jones?
Okay, we do have correspondence from the Falmouth Police Department from Brian Reed, saying he's reviewed the application, and this department has no problem with the request for one regular and one additional seasonal taxi permit.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just wanted to suggest to the board that you consider the condition or stipulation that is, that is noted on the application, that is, that the vehicles be stored on the premises at 17 Walker Street, stored or garaged at that same location. Obviously, parking is an issue in that entire area. That is represented, it would appear on the application as well.
And to clarify, that means it's on that property as opposed to the little parking lot across the property?
Right.
I just have one thing to say. If we condition that as part of the entire approval this evening, there, there are some seasonal permits here. I don't think it's reasonable to say that those vehicles be stored at this location when they're not in use. You know, they're, when they're in use, I think is an inappropriate time of the year. So in other words, they would not be stored on town property. I understand that we don't want to take up any additional parking, but I, I think formulation of the motion to be stored when in use, meaning when the permits are active, at that location would be appropriate.
For clarification, so you mean that the, the permits that are seasonal, that those vehicles could be stored elsewhere because they're not in use in the off-season?
That's correct. Right, in some, in some cases.
So the, all the ones that are in So the, all the ones that are in use would be stored there while they're...
Right. I don't know, but I think Mr. Moore takes some of those vehicles actually off the road in the winter months to save on insurance and things of that nature. So it wouldn't really be...
Do we need to clarify where those are going to be stored to make sure it's not in a residential area that are now having two additional taxis stored during the winter in, at his home?
Perhaps we could ask Mr. Moore where you store your vehicles when they're not in use?
I have enough parking right now for the additional two permits, not the property. And the ones that do come off the road, they go, maybe two or three of them go to my other business, Route Twenty-Eight Auto Center, which I have a big storage lot out back there.
All right. Any further questions from the board? I would like to proceed.
I move approval of the request for one annual and one seasonal taxi permit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the request for one annual and one seasonal license?
Additional, I mean.
Additional license.
Permits is the key word.
Permits.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that brings us to the minutes. We have this evening minutes for public session and executive session for June seventeen, twenty thirteen. So for the public minutes...
Yeah, I move approval of the, the minutes of the regular meeting of June seventeen.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes is presented for the meeting, for the public session of June seventeen, twenty thirteen. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? One abstain?
Mr. Jones is abstaining.
And...
I move approval of the minutes of the executive session for June seventeenth and not to release.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes is presented for June seventeen, twenty thirteen executive session and not to release at this time. Any discussion on the motion?
Is that the normal procedure?
It is. It is.
I didn't know if there was something within the, the minutes that you, you had the motion that way. That's what I'm asking.
We have it that way because it's, these are issues that are ongoing, and until the issues are resolved, then they can be released.
Well, I approve that.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Extention? One abstention. All right, and we do not have at this time any minutes from prior executive sessions to release to the public, so that addresses that agenda item. And so now that brings us to the summary of actions. And I will read through these. If anyone would like to hold any of these, they are welcome to, and we will discuss them separately. Otherwise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve all of these. Approve donation to beach donation account, Seascape Association, six hundred dollars. Approve Oyster Pond FY fourteen land reimbursement grant application.
That was withdrawn, was it?
That was withdrawn, thank you. So we'll take that off the list here. Approve request for one-day liquor license, being held. Approve request for special event, MBL Fourth of July Parade, July four, twenty thirteen. Approve N-Star petition to install four-inch underground conduit by Water Court. Approve N-Star petition to install four-inch underground conduit, Harbor Avenue. Vote letter of support to transfer Cape Cod mosquito control program from the state to the county. Vote to... Did we want to hold that one?
The two N-Star conduits?
Mm-hmm.
We received an email asking if, with the concurrence of the board, those both be delayed until your meeting of July fifteenth.
Okay, then we'll take those off. All right, so then the last item, vote to appoint Ms. Moffett as the town's representative to the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative. So for, I apologize, folks, we do, we should have these numbered for our edification, I guess. So I'll need a motion then to approve the donation to the beach donation account, the request for the special event, the letter of support, and appointing Ms. Moffett.
So move.
A motion...
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, unanimous. And then, Mr. Murphy, you held the request for one-day liquor license, Falmouth Historical Society, July twenty-one, twenty thirteen.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just for disclosure purposes, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Thank you. Make a motion to approve.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And I will pass around that we have signature pages for each of these items, as well as the prior hearings that we had. All right, and that brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, which is a board discussion of wind turbines. Some clarification for the audience. As the agenda notes, this is a board discussion. The board convened last Saturday, not this Saturday, but a week ago Saturday, its annual retreat, and one of the discussions that ensued from that was the question of workshops in the coming year, a practice that the board has had in the past and that the board would like to move again on and have workshops where we have invited guests and participants to help the board come to decisions about major issues facing the town. In this particular situation, obviously, the, the question of wind turbines came up first and foremost, and the board decided at that time that it would be appropriate for the board to have a discussion of this first, before we began to invite participants and, and public comment, simply so we could get our heads around the situation and decide how to proceed and what questions we needed answered, what issues we needed resolved. So tonight's discussion, and one of the reasons why we're holding it in this form is so that the board has a more intimate format, if you will, so we can discuss amongst ourselves without having to crane our necks down a relatively straight table. We will not be taking public comment this evening. This is, of course, a public meeting, so you're welcome to stay and observe the board. It will be taped and replayed for future purposes, but this evening, it's simply going to be a discussion amongst the board. Public feedback is certainly welcome in the form of emails, phone calls, after the meeting, and we do welcome that. This is a preliminary discussion, with the board anticipates that we'll probably have another meeting such as this, where we will have public comment, where we will have other boards, committees, commissions invited, and experts in order to resolve some of the issues surrounding the turbines. Did I leave anything out? All right.
Mr. Carlton Foss?
Request to videotape.
We have a request to videotape the board's proceedings. Any objections to that? All right, you have permission, sir. All right, so there was a, some information, I think, provided to everyone in their packet. And I certainly have questions and issues that I have. I don't know, would someone else like to start, or would you prefer that I start? And we can proceed from there with the discussion.
Always good to have the chairman frame the discussion.
All right. Well, I'll, for starters, I'll let you all know, I did have a chance, I ran into the current chair of the Board of Health, Jed Goldstone, and he, this past week, informed me that the Board of Health is ready and willing to assist the Board of Selectment in any decision that we make and in any information that we might need from them. So certainly, that's always good to hear, and I think once we decide to hold a, a larger discussion, and if we choose to bring them in, we can, it sounds like they're more than willing to help us out and participate in that discussion. I also did have the opportunity over the weekend, some neighbors of the wind turbines asked me to sit down with them and answer some of their questions, and I did do that yesterday, addressed some of their concerns and questions. They had specific issues about where were we going and what this meeting might entail, and of course, I explained to them what I just explained to the general public here, that this is the beginning of a process for the board to decide how we're going to proceed after the May vote, so that's a few things. There were some questions that were raised during that meeting that I could not answer, and I would, I think it'd be a good idea for us to get those on the record this evening, and then we can have staff perhaps research the answers for us. So I'll put these out there right now for discussion of the board. One of the questions that was raised was the, the funding for Wind One, and originally, the discussion surrounded, originally, as I recall, it was a revenue bond, but there's some who questioned that, whether it's not a revenue bond, but a standard municipal bond that's been used to fund the turbines. And that's certainly worthy of, I think, looking into. I don't know if it would make a difference in terms of how we would address, if, for example, if, if we were to take down Wind One, does it really make a difference whether it's a standard municipal bond or doesn't, or a revenue bond? And again, if these are questions we can't answer this evening, that's fine, but I just want to make sure that we have those. Some more clarification about the cost of removing the turbines. I think that's certainly one of the, the biggest questions. There was a, a range of costs that was presented, and because of it, it was a range. Obviously, it'd be nice to have some, I think, greater clarification as to what it might cost if we truly wanted to pursue that, or, I shouldn't say truly wanted to, but if we did end up pursuing that option. Some of the other questions and issues that were raised. I was forwarded an email. One of the things that came up in the discussion was the whole question, obviously, the DEP did their study of the noise, and there was the, the question of the one exceedance that was found, and that's been used by some folks to suggest that there's only one violation in one location. But they, some members of the Wind Turbine Options Committee were good enough to forward an email to me, and I did want to share that with the board, because I think this goes to some of the questions about what, how those, those work. And I'll forward this on to the rest of the board. I apologize, I just got it this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to forward it yet. But one of the things that was mentioned in here, and this is from Tony Rogers from DN V Kima, which was one of the consultants, DN V Kima Energy and Sustainability. Tony Rogers is the principal specialist, and he was one of the individuals, I think, retained by the options committee to help resolve some of the questions and issues. And in this, he actually, they actually discussed the whole question of, you know, how does these, how do the results that the state got relate to the entire neighborhood? And he mentions in here that the number of houses to be considered for mitigation is between twenty and forty, from looking at the range of possible outcomes and the number of complaints about Wind One. And he says, but he disclaims, he says, "This is a very imprecise estimate." But I think that's certainly one of the questions that we need to have answered as we go forward with this process is, and this brings to mind one of the other questions or one of the issues that was raised, is that the DEP hasn't yet, and I guess the question is, will they ever come to the town and say, "You've had an exceedance, you're now in violation"? You know, how do they, I guess, relate that to the situation? Would they look at this and say, "Based on this, we would extrapolate that there might be twenty or forty or fifty homes where there's a violation, and therefore, we're going to order certain mitigation, order the town to conduct certain mitigation"? Or is it that they haven't done that simply because we've curtailed the operation of the turbines, and there's technically no violation at this point under these circumstances?
One thing about the letter from Tony Rogers, and just to be very clear, that letter was not agreed upon and vetted by the entire WTOP group. There were members of the group who really felt that it was not appropriate to come forward as a piece of evidence that the group was presenting to our board.
Okay.
And that's the reason why that number didn't come forward, that Tony Rogers had previously made a much, a different number.
Okay.
And they felt that there was a discrepancy between that number and this number, and that's the reason why the group could not agree...
Okay.
...on whether that should be presented or not. I felt the letter from the DEP is very clear that they don't believe there are going to be any exceedances or violations under our present curtailment, and that they will not feeling a need to come back and check if we curtail the way we do. If we change that curtailment, the letter, I read the letter, then they would come back and feel we need to find out whether there are violations.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, you know, I've been reading, obviously, tons of information. I looked back over the report again, and I looked at the draft discussion items that were given to us as part of the package. The first being to consider and adopt an operating plan that responds to the townwide ballot vote and past town meeting actions. Another is to consider and develop alternative mitigation strategies and what the steps might be. So I think we need to take a look at an operating plan, and I think we need to talk about what that means. Does that mean a full operating plan, twenty-four-seven, Wind One and Wind Two? Or does it need an operating plan with some curtailment? And if so, what would that curtailment be? Would it be a curtailment that would actually be able to pay for the expenses of the turbines so that there would be no additional cost to the town? Or would it be a, a curtailment that has more mitigation to it because of some of the concerns of the neighbors? So I think we need to look at this, this big picture and begin to develop the appropriate strategies around that. And I, we're not going to do that sitting here in a workshop session, but I think if we can decide on what we want to pursue in, in more detail and get more, I mean, more backup information on and more appropriate information, particularly in the area of mitigation, whether it's mitigation of noise to properties, or whether it's mitigation in terms of compensation, or whether it's, but other, any other mitigation factor it might be. So, but I thought that the categories that, that this information was laid out under, which is the full operation or a curtailment, a break-even curtailment, or a curtailment that maybe is greater than break-even, that actually provides some more income to be able to operate these going forward. And I know removal was still on there. I, I think that if we are going to even consider going in that direction, we should consider that seriously in terms of the, the impact of the vote. I mean, the vote was, no, we don't want to pay to have the wind turbines taken down, so, and I, you can't really go any further than that. I, I don't think it's appropriate to try to interpret that vote. What does it really mean? I think the question was asked, shall the, shall the town be authorized to appropriate funds to remove the turbines? And the answer is no. So if the answer is no, then we have to take a look at what option, other options we have. Maybe we even want to take a look at operating Wind Two twenty-four hours, and maybe we want to do something else with Wind One. But I think we need to lay out, I think, for our, our very capable staff people here and say, "Look, these are the options that we want to discuss in more, in more detail, but we need your help to give us the kind of information we need to be able to carry out that discussion." For instance, if we talk about full operation, that's probably pretty easy to do. This is, this is, we're going to run it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and this is the income, and that's a pretty easy one. If it's a curtailment, then what would the curtailment be? Would it be eighteen hours a day? Would it be twelve hours a day? What would it be? Would it vary? Would Wind Two operate more hours and Wind One fewer hours? But I think if we ask, if we lay out exactly what it is we want to take up very specifically so that we can make decisions about where we're going to go next, and I don't think we should drag this out very long. Hopefully, by the end of the summer, we'll have a decision made about where we're going to go with this, what it's going to cost, how we're going to get the money, and so forth. So that's, that's where I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
I, I agree with Pat about one particular issue, and I think that issue is important for us tonight to make a decision on. And everyone in this town has a different interpretation. And everyone in this town has a different interpretation of what the vote meant. Folks in this, some folks in this community think that what that vote meant was run them 24/7. Some folks meant, thought that folks just merely didn't want to spend $14 million. So there's a broad range there. And everyone has their, their opinion on, and is entitled to their opinion upon the interpretation of that vote. But I think it's important that this board decide that we're going to look at all of the options moving forward versus draw a line in the sand and make a, a, a decision tonight or in the next few weeks, what actually the vote meant. Because the vote meant to me that folks didn't want to spend $14 million and tear down the turbines. Many different reasons why they didn't want to do that. Some folks wanted it for, because they wanted to see renewable energy continue and for them to run 24 hours. Other folks just merely didn't want to see their taxes go up. So I think this board is burdened with the idea and the ideal of how we're going to move forward to interpret the vote, whether that be good, bad, or indifferent. But to find something that the entire community can, can live with. And I, I tend to agree that I think that we need to go through each one of the options methodically, see what the costs are, and see whether or not we can have buy-in. I think that the neighbors understand that the way the vote was, that that particular option at this particular time with at least the town on this board is not an option any longer. They still have those options in court, they still have those options with legislation. So those are some other options. But we need to roll up our sleeves. There may be some, some wiggle room. And I think it might be good that you had some discussions with folks. I think maybe we need to, this board will look at dividing and conquering a little bit. And forgive me if the term is, is inappropriate, but meaning that we sit down with the affected parties individually, because this board can do that, and bring back some ideas. What is the furthest you we can go? Where can we find middle ground? Because we surely couldn't find it in the Wind Options Group. That was something that didn't happen. We surely tried like heck to do it. 26 meetings over the course of nine months. I think that no one can say that we didn't take a, a good, valid effort at it. But sometimes when you put everybody in the room, when we do contract negotiations with unions, they're not always in the room at the same time. We sit with one group, and we go sit with the other group. And I think that's maybe an area where we might need to find out where there might be some cracks that we can find. And I, again, I don't want to pick things away, but I, I want to find maybe the, the limits of where we can go and how we can do this to move forward. Because, you know, we had an interview tonight with a fellow from the Energy Committee, and, you know, we have this esco coming looming on our horizon here, and this could save the town millions of dollars over the years to come. And I surely hope it will provide some infrastructure for us. And I think we need to do one thing behind us and move forward. My suggestion is that we take each option and move forward with those options, but have each maybe, sometimes, you know, in the open meeting law, we can't have subcommittee meetings, but we surely can individually speak with groups and then bring back our thoughts to this board and share them, and then maybe come up with some ideas. Since our last meeting, I had a group that approached me that had, owns a very large tract of land in this community. And they believed that it would be suitable for relocation. And I said, "Where were you?" Well, they weren't, they weren't ready to bring it forward at that time. So there might be other options there, so we need to roll up our sleeves and try them all.
Well, I think what I would ask Kevin is, when it was decided by the selectmen to, to put it on the ballot, when, when that happened, what was your intention? What were you thinking was the reason? Because after the vote happened, people kind of formed into groups of what was your, the board's reason. So maybe that might help me a little bit in thinking, because I have heard some very creative answers to what that vote meant. And so it depends which side of that you were kind of thinking. So I thought, well, what were you thinking? Or what was the board thinking at that time when it was decided to do that?
Can I answer that? You know, and, and that's, that's a very appropriate question. There was an interpretation, again, in the public of what we did as a decision makers, that we were quick to make judgment. I, I don't think that, that anyone knew that we were following the 26 meetings and the subsequent meetings that this board and the multitude of reading, that I can tell you that there doesn't go a day, does not go by. And Becky, you're fortunate to be now on the board, that a day doesn't go by, that I don't receive a, an email or a report of something that happened in Australia or New Zealand or, or somewhere else, whether it be for or against wind energy. And it, it has consumed numerous, numerous hours, the reading. Besides the fact of following these meetings. I think if people want to get into my head why I made that vote, there was surety in that vote, there was misinformation on both sides as we stand here today, I don't think we can run those turbines 24/7. That's my personal belief. We have an exceedance. Until that exceedance is cleared up, I think the DEP was clear by the letter that Doug, Doug mentioned, that would get shut down unless we would approve that it didn't meet the exceedance. So we had surety in that it was $14 million. Brent brought up a point tonight that it was 20 to 40 homes. What, what is the mitigation? No one had absolute ideas of what the numbers were. We had one surety, at least I believe we did, of what a number was. People didn't like that, so we can go back to the drawing board.
Okay. So it didn't occur to you at that time in hearing some of the residents of the town say, the people that voted to, to maintain the turbines was that they didn't want to spend $15 million? I mean, if, if you interpret the idea that that vote meant, "We didn't want to spend $15 million," that still doesn't respond to the point of, well, what do you do with the turbines? So, so I interpreted it in a, what I thought was a more clear way was, they were voting to continue the turbines to be used for the purpose that they were put there. And so I looked at that without any other thought about, "We don't want to spend $15 million, but we're just going to let them sit up on the hill." And so it was kind of a surprise, and it got, it became a little more creative after there were several more people. But anyhow, that was kind of my thought to kind of see where I was starting. But I think as far as dragging our feet is incredibly important that we do not do that. I think we've had so many meetings in this town with incredibly bright people who have a discussion. But in that, in that one group of people discussing, you will have what is called two facts. I have my fact, and you have your fact. And they are completely opposite. And both groups will defend that fact. And you can't have two facts that are opposing. So there has to be decision making in that. And that's the part that I see that is happening quite a bit, is the fact that that, someone will say, "They didn't use the correct measurement, they're not, they're not measuring the same type of things," and, or "They're mixing apples, oranges," is what we usually would say. So my point, number one, is that we do not drag our feet. We move this along, we do come to a consensus, we have no more committee meetings. I, I think the committee meetings, as you said, I mean, 26 meetings, I don't think we need too many more meetings. And the print, the print that all of us are reading, and it comes in daily into our email, the letters to the editor, other newspapers, there's a lot that is printed. And when you start to look at it and you say, "Is, is this your view or is this your view?" Because both say they're correct. So my feeling to the rest of the board members is to move as quickly as possible, to be as accurate as possible, and make sure that everyone has a compromised position that they're comfortable with. And I don't think that's impossible to do.
Do I agree with you? The best way that I can put it is, there's three sides to every story.
Well, that's, that's probably, it's that third side we're looking for.
That's exactly it. We're the jury.
That's okay.
The perfect example of that is there's a story right now that the way we're running the turbines costs the town $500,000 a year. And my, I have exception with the use of cost for that. It might be at a loss of $100,000 to $200,000 and a revenue, a non-revenue production. But I think to call non-revenue production cost is a little bit misleading. And that's where one group will say, "No, the cost is 200." Another group will say, "No, the cost is 600,000 or 500,000." And those are the two facts that each group will say. And I think we have to be very careful as to, you know, how do we negotiate that, what a, what costs are.
And I think that is one of those questions that we need to have answered. Because as, you know, one of the things that we talked about with the curtailment was that if we continue to operate them under the current curtailment, that at some point we're going to be losing money. And I guess therein is one of those questions that we need staff to address for us, is that, where is that point where, you know, for example, the, the Options Committee put together and said, you know, "Curtailment is an option, there's a break-even curtailment." So the question is, is how far are we from having to make that decision? I think that's one of the first questions we need to have answered. Because, and I agree with you, Becky, we need to, at some point, come to a, a long-term decision regarding an operating plan. But the question is, is how far away is that? Is that something, and I had been under the assumption that we needed to do that today because we're into the new fiscal year. What I've been told is that it's not that urgent, but the question is, is how urgent is it? Is it next month? Is it six months from now? Yeah, I mean, at some point, we need to, we need to have an operating plan in place. And I think that, Pat, you've got an excellent grip on that one, in that we do need to have some sort of long-term operating plan for the turbines if they're going to remain standing. And even if they do come down sometime between now and the date that they come down, we still have to have some sort of operating plan. And so therein is, is the question is, how far out is that horizon? And how soon do we need to make that decision? And again, if it's not something we can answer tonight, that's fine. But obviously, these are the questions that we need to start accumulating and get the answers to them, so.
I'd like to see us have the answers to everything by the end of the summer, if that's possible. Certainly, we will need to know by the end of the summer, I would think, about where we stand in terms of an operating deficit, in terms of the budget. But, you know, I think it's, it's kind of clear. You either operate both of them 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 24/7. You operate them with a curtailment. You operate Wind One 24/7, Wind Two with a curtailment. You operate Wind Two 24/7 and take down Wind One, perhaps. That might be another option. Because of all the issues with Wind One, we don't always know what all of them are. And then if there are still further, some further studies that are information, I'm not going to call it studies, I think we've studied beyond the capacity, if there's more information, we need to do that. And then we need to look at, and then we need to go from operation to mitigation. What are some of the mitigation options? One is obviously home purchasing. That's a mitigation option. Another one is retrofitting. I mean, that's still out there. We've never really pursued that in any, in any particular way. I don't know how detailed we could get about it. Or some other financial compensation, such as noise abatements or some other, I don't know what all the other financial compensations are. But we need to get, we need to go back to that table and say, and run the gamut of options that we have in front of us that, that are, that are reasonable. They may not be reasonable for the town, but they may be reasonable for the community. Or they could be reasonable for the town and maybe not so reasonable for the community. And so we have to weigh the pros and cons of those very carefully. But I think if we just lay out what those are, and we say to the staff, "Come back to us in a couple of weeks or three weeks and lay out for us these options, what they cost, what they save, what they, what they don't, what they'll, what they will do, how many neighbors are involved or not involved, and maybe that's not even a good question to ask, I don't know." But that's what I think we need to do, because we're not going to solve it tonight. But we certainly need to have a very clear and informative option analysis for us that, that lays out a pathway for us to follow. And at that point, then, we can then get into the, also, the public discussion part.
Jump in, folks, I'm not going to try to.
This is a general discussion.
Can I just ask two questions? I hope Mr. Suso can answer these, just to clear up in my mind. That right now, Wind Two, which was a loan that had been transferred to a grant, we have not heard back from anybody saying we have to pay it back with our present running of it.
Correct.
We did hear a few months ago, if we took it down or didn't run it, we would have to pay it back. But right now, they're not complaining we're not running it enough.
I've received no complaints about that.
Are we right now paying back our recs yet? Or has that repayment not started yet?
No, that's not started yet.
Okay. Thank you.
I do want to say one thing, Brent, and you, you said that if they come down, short of, of a court judgment, I think that ship has sailed. I think that we have to be realistic, that this board gave it a good effort, and that we try to show folks that, on the face value, what the amounts, the dollars were, and that we could come to a resolution of the problem. That failed at the ballot. And even though one or more of us might have that feeling that that was the right judgment, I think we have to understand that that didn't happen and didn't occur at the ballot. And we have to understand that, that, that option by process of elimination is probably now off the table, with the exception of a court order or, or a judgment in court. So I, I think we need to look at things by process of elimination. And, and it pains me to say that, but I think I used as much political will and capital as I possibly could to try to convince the public as we move forward that that was a good judgment on this board's behalf because we had absolute closure. But that didn't happen. So I think by process of elimination, we need to look at the other, other options. Because I think we, we failed at the ballot. And for whatever reason, Becky, you have your opinion on why it failed, I have my opinion. My opinion was strictly, it was dollars and cents. I don't think folks, but that's superfluous. But I think that that option is now off the table, at least in my mind, because whatever we do is going to cost us basically some money. Keeping the current operation is going to cost us money. We're going to have to go to a town meeting or have to go to the ballot. Every one of these options has to get approved somewhere. Even the 24/7 has to get approved at the state because there is exceedances there. And one of the options would be to buy up all those exceedances. So, you know, unfortunately, there might have to be some other options there that we have to. But I think process of elimination, that one is out.
I think what happened here in the last 15 minutes of all of us talking is to show that each person who is a selectman has a very high level of information about what is happening with the turbines. And I think it is very, it's, it's commendable. Because each one has their purpose, or what they are addressing, or what is being said to the public, there, there is some very serious homework that has been done. And I, I hear in different voices, and I do agree with Kevin in saying, that I do think that vote was the end of the discussion about removing the turbines. That if we want to come back to that and address it at some other point, but I, I believe, I believe that the vote meant the turbines would continue, the turbines would bring revenue into the town. And, and I think, in my mind, I go from that point, and then I read everything that, that I needed to read about that. But I want to come to Mr. Suso and talk about the third quarter, that you had made a comment, if we could have some kind of discussion concerning any of the finances or, and what was your purpose?
Certainly, my, my thought would be that the, the board conduct its discussion during the summer, summer months essentially, and, and make an operating decision that would be implemented early in the fourth quarter of this calendar year. So in other words, make a decision to termination August or in September at the latest, as to how you would choose to operate the turbines in the future.
at the latest, as to how you would choose to operate the turbines, uh, in the future. And staff, staff members, by the way, would be happy to lay out alternatives and come back to this board for you to explore those, uh, with information, including, uh, any legal issues, uh, which may be involved with those. And certainly, uh, as has been, uh, mentioned here, there are legal issues, uh, affecting uh, this matter because we do have, uh, litigation, uh, before us on these turbines, which, uh, does limit to some extent what we're able to do, um, in, going forward, including discussion in public session, uh, in some of these same areas, unfortunately.
But the question to you, though, even if we make a decision by late first quarter, i- it, it's only a stopgap measure. Am I right or wrong? We're talking about an operational plan, and we're not talking about an ongoing operational plan, right? Unless it's break even.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to bring you a variety of options, uh, not just break, break even. I, you know, I pers- I will tell you, I personally have concerns with, uh, how someone could ever define break even. Having, having read that, having, uh, sat in on a number of those discussion sessions, uh, there are, in my opinion, major issues with whatever the concept of break even might be. There are so many variables in operating these turbines. The assumptions about wind, the assumptions about curtailment, uh, assumptions about relative power generation, uh, which can all affect what break even even means. And, uh, yeah, I think, I think there are serious problems, uh, coming up with an adequate definition that one can apply in, in the long run. But happy to look at those options.
So the long-term, ongoing resolution could be run them eight hours a day and go back to the town saying, we need to have an override to be able to fund the difference between our expenses and our income. And that could be a long-term decision we make, ongoing, make that decision in September, and we push hard for it.
Right. And, and incidentally, my other point there, when I submitted it earlier about taking them down, I think relocation, there, there are a couple of additional sites that need to be, continue to be explored. One is that we couldn't have cited them any worse on this particular property. It is in the most, uh, clo- the closest, it, it was just done out of convenience where we cited them on the property.
On residences, from a wind, that they're in the best spot from wind point of view. Not in the best point from residences, point of view.
I don't know if that's necessarily true.
There may be better locations for wind. I, I do want to, real quick, though, I, I do want to just touch on a couple of things that, eh, you know, and I, obviously, there's discussion about what the vote meant, and I, and I agree with Kevin, with what you and Pat are saying, that you, you really can't take the vote to be anything more than, the question was, is it?
Should we authorize?
Do, do, yeah, do we, do we pay, do you want to increase your taxes to take down the turbines, or you do, you not want to do that? And the reason why I, I take, you know, obviously, Rebecca and I disagree, are going to disagree on this one, and will agree to disagree on it. But the reason why I say that is because I've actually heard from people who said, didn't want to increase my taxes, don't want to see them, feel for the people who live up there, but I don't want to increase my taxes to take them down. And so from that aspect, I agree, that ship has sailed, so to speak. But I don't know that taking them down is necessarily no longer an option. And maybe, like you say, relocation is a better idea. It sort of takes them down, but we still keep them, we still own them, we're just putting them somewhere else. But one of the things that I, one of the things that bothered me, I guess, surrounding some of the, the talk and the, the way the vote turned out, is that there was this assumption that the board suddenly made a snap decision. And, you know, we've talked about that already this evening, but I don't know that people realize that, you know, we had the report, the, the options committee did a lot of things. We were presented information by so many people, and over the course of the year, we had a lot to digest, and we made a decision. And it wasn't something that we did overnight, it was something, like you said, that we took that time to make that decision. And I think one of the things, as we move forward with this, what I don't want to do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. Because we're already at a point now where we've got information, we've made decisions, and we can go forward with some of these things. And, and for example, the options committee gave us, you know, various options, the full operation, the curtailment, the removal or, or removal of the turbines, and obviously, that's the one that we took. But I think if we're going to move forward with this in a timely fashion, as Rebecca notes, that we don't want to delay this any longer, I'd say we start with what we have here from the options committee and say, all right, well, removing the turbines is off the table, but I would say for now. Because, you know, you mentioned the court order. There are things that have happened since the May vote. And one of the most significant ones is that just the other day, we got word that there's legislation that has now been filed in, eh, at the, the general court with the Senate, with the Senate and the House. David Viera and Therese Murray have filed legislation that would essentially fund the removal of our turbines. So people may not want to have their taxes increased to remove those turbines, but maybe the state is going to foot the bill for that. So that may not be on the table from the perspective of raising taxes, but if the state came down to us and said, hey, you want us to take those turbines down, and, you know, we'll give you the money to do it, and maybe come up with some compromise or something, and we talked about solar array instead, that may still be an option for us.
I, I hadn't heard that. Is that actually a bill that's been filed?
That is a bill.
Yeah.
It is a bill? Was it just filed?
Yes.
Yesterday, I think.
Yeah, it was just filed.
I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt, but, but I have a copy of it.
Yes.
But, um, but if I would just, eh, what I thought about that, when I read that, is that it, it is simply a bill. It doesn't have any kind of legs to it at, at this point, and it's kind of premature to kind of even think about that. But I want to come back to the point that we haven't addressed yet, is every decision that has been made concerning the turbines of purchasing and, and, and running them, and have all behind them have a set of rules from either the federal government or the state. And when you take money from either the federal government or you, you accept a loan from the state, your, your hands are tied, and you're, you're bound to certain regulations. So it's good for us to stop and, and have a discussion about what we think would be the best thing to happen. But I think we really need to investigate what we have promised, or what is, what is going to be demanded of us if we would make a decision that would then become, would, would not be legal. And I think we need to know that. Because when the federal government gives you money, or when the state gives you money for whatever issue, you know, there's, there's pages of fine print. And I don't want us to get in a quagmire there of a decision that was made here, and we overlooked our responsibility. So, and keeping that in mind.
And, and I think that question has been answered to a certain degree, because we did have, obviously, that feedback from the state that said that if we were going to take down Wind Two, for example, that they would require us to pay back the grant, that they would consider that a, a violation of the contract, so to speak. So I think we do have that information, it's just perhaps a question of getting it all into one spot so we can make the decision.
Well, I, I just want us to make sure we don't tread on their feet.
Uh, and, and with all due respect, Becky, I think those were politically motivated decisions. We had one decision from the federal government that said the loan was, in fact, met by building them. And then our administration here in, in the state of Massachusetts said, whoa, 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 we have different criteria. So those are politically motivated, and, and maybe politics, politics can play a role, meaning with our state senators and, uh, our, our state representatives. Because politics, pardon me?
I would never have thought that.
If you look at the two contradicting letters, you would be kind of shocked, but...
The, the other thing, I mentioned the, the bill, the other thing that I'd like the board to, to remember as we look at all of this, is that, um, Fair Haven has curtailed their turbines. And the interesting thing that came out of Fair Haven is that it wasn't the Board of Selectmen that did it, it was the Board of Health that ordered it. And so when we talk about information that's available to us, I think one of the things that we have to consider is that there is going to be new information that's presented to us on a regular basis. And I don't know if anything else is going to come between, say, now and, say, September. But the Fair Haven decision was interesting in that because it was a Board of Health, and we know that our own Board of Health has reached out to the State Board of Health and asked them for assistance, and we're getting crickets from the state. But the question, of course, then becomes is, you know, how does that Fair Haven decision play into what our Board of Health might decide at some point in the near future? Or will it affect the state decision, or?
Well, that Fair Haven one is a private developer, too. It's not a town, it's town owned land, I think, but it's, uh, it's a development.
It's a private share mine, yeah.
I'm curious what our Board of Health would have said if our turbines were running twenty-four seven. They did not talk about sleeplessness with our turbines, because by the time they'd really looked at the issue, we were running them twelve hours on, twelve hours off.
Well, it, I think, and actually, this is something that Jed and I sort of touched on, is that I think we can all agree, at least those of us who have been on the board during this process, and, you know, I'm not meaning to exclude you, obviously, but, um, we've seen a huge volume of phone calls and emails, and the Board of Health as well. And for everyone involved, I think we can all agree that when the cur- when we agreed to do this twelve hours on, twelve hours off curtailment, that the volume just plummeted. And that, yeah, people still have complaints, there's still issues there. I mean, I've gone out there personally and, and walked away with vertigo. So I know that there's something going on there. But the, the reality is, is that people are able to sleep at night now. And if we walk away from, from this with anything, it's that some sort of curtailment at night is, I think, an absolute must. Because if people can sleep, it's going to make it easier for them, it's going to make it easier for us, um, you know, as far as how that curtailment is fashioned, or whether there are other options regarding relocation.
See, those are the discussions we'll have after we get the information back.
Exactly.
Then we'll be in a better position to be able to make those decisions.
Well, that's a question. Are, are we going to be able to do this just merely with staff? Because we're looking at some hard numbers here. Are we going to need to, I mean, we had, uh, a lot more money was invested in the WTOP than this board had ever thought, from the state's behalf, and, and...
Quite frankly, I think we're all waiting for some facts to tell us what to do. And we're not going to get those. I think we may be at the position where we're not going to really get much more facts than what we have. We may just have to make a decision.
I think that's right.
And you say, well, this is the best I know. I mean, maybe there is a little more fact out there, but we've done, as you're saying, all the meetings, all the experts, and we have five different facts that say different things, and we may just have to make a decision.
Well, that, that, to a point, I think that's true. But you, but you have to know how much money you're going to spend or save, either way. I mean, if you're going to run the turbines and, or you're not going to run them, then you have to find a way to execute a decision. You can't make it without knowing.
We're never going to know. We're going to know a range.
Yeah, we are.
We're never going to know what the numbers really are. As Julian said, the actual production of these turbines is a range, as to how much power they produce, what the wind is.
Well, that's, I think that's, that's a given, it's a range, but we have to know what it is.
And maybe a fairly big range also.
And it's different times of the year that the wind blows, eh, a lot stronger, eh, you know, than, than other times of the year. The curtailment might be different in the summer months versus the winter months. Eh, you know, there could be other options there that we haven't even really looked at.
Well, that was, I mean, there was a thing called smart curtailment that WOP did look at, where you actually programmed it based both on population, the ambient sound, the wind production, and you said, okay, when can these turbines make the most power? And also be concerned about the least amount of noise, or relative noise. And that was one option that, uh, the WTOP dismissed and didn't really look deeply into using this smart curtailment option.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we, uh, look at the calendar, and we see what days are appropriate that, um, all five of us can meet, and we have, uh, three or four goals for each one of those meetings. And then we bring that all together within a period of three or four months. I think, I think we need to have dates and times and a goal, and we need to gather all of the information that we already have, bring it together. And I think I'm looking at that third quarter.
I'm wondering if what we could do is have that be, we fine tune, looking at three or four of the options, and it's, okay, let's hash out what are the, what are the ramifications and the costs and the benefits analysis of this option?
Okay.
And...
That's what I think, we need, we need to optake all those options. And then ask the staff to just give us some data from, from which to work. And then we know. And if we decide to do something and it's going to cost seven, eight, nine million, whatever, we know what that is, and we have to figure out how we're going to get it.
But I think we have to start. I think, I think, I think we need to start, instead of coming back to another meeting and then say, well, maybe we'll start later. I really think, before we leave tonight, we need to have dates when the five of us can meet in public.
Well, we, we've already presented a number of questions and issues that staff is, we're going to need to get answers, and, and hopefully, staff can provide those, or at the very least, come back to us and say, you know what, we're not going to be able to get these answers without additional funds, or additional staff, or additional information, or where, you know, we have to get something from the state, and they haven't given it to us, or something to that effect. But an answer, one way or the other. But there are, again, I would go back to the options that we were provided by the committee. Some of these things, you know, and for example, one of the things in here talks about voluntary purchases of resident, voluntary purchase of residences under the full operation option. Well, if we're going to do that, you know, and that's been suggested by some folks, I think we need to have some sort of plan, or some sort of idea as to how we would undergo that kind of a plan. Because when we talk about, you know, the costs involved, you know, one of the things... We went ahead, the, the board, you know, the, the last incarnation of the board, went ahead with the option to remove the turbines and ask town meeting and, and the, the citizens of the town for the funds to do so. We did that based on the understanding at the time that that was the clearest picture for us in terms of the costs involved in the resolution. Well, a, a lot of people have said, well, why not just buy homes and resell them? Well, there are a lot of question marks with that, and I don't know that we can pursue that option without having a clear picture. Because obviously, if you're going to go ahead and buy homes, if we're going to engage in a, in a mass, eh, what, eh, what's the term? Eminent domain. If we're going to engage in imminent domain, which is essentially what that is, we've got to come up with a dollar figure. Because we've got to start somewhere with the funds, and then we'd have to go back to town meeting. And of course, this is one of the dangers of these other options, is that, okay, let's say we want to pursue buying houses. Well, how are we necessarily going to do that if we don't have a dollar figure? And then when we go to town meeting with the people and say, we need X number of millions of dollars to buy so many properties to address this issue, what happens if they turn that one down next?
You know, if it could, I think we're getting into the weeds.
Yeah, and you're right, we don't want to get that part into the weeds.
No disrespect, but we are getting into the weeds. I think we just need to stay, keep big picture. The, the major options that we have are outlined, some in the WTOP report. We have a vast amount of information.
There we go.
I mean, I just started to reread that report again. We have all the loads of information. We need an outline of option A, B, C, D, E. Impacts, um, impacts to neighbors, impacts to the town, costs, impacts of costs, outcomes, what are, what are the outcomes? How do they affect the, the energy, uh, policy of the town, all of that. And then, and just look at a framework, not, not a thirty-page document, but a framework of what the options are, and what the important facts are in executing options like that, including costs. And then have the discussion, the, and then get into the weeds, perhaps, with each of the options. At that po- and that may take two or three or four meetings to do that, if we, if we think that we need to do that.
I, I, can, can I make a suggestion? My suggestion is that this is not an issue that is going to be solved overnight, and we all know that, it's going to take staff quite a bit of time to put together. They may have a lot of this information already. But I think we need to do a two-pronged approach. Number one is, come up with some kind of, um, operational plan, whether that operational plan be, uh, a temporary operational plan that, uh, allows for fiscal sustainability of the community. Because we do have a few to share responsibility. Then the board has an option to look at all of the other options. And again, by process of elimination, we come up with what we think is the next best option moving forward. Put hard numbers to it. And I think that people might, you know, might be, uh, shocked that, that all of these things are going to cost some money. And even Becky, your option of twenty-four seven, if you want to take that option, let's run with it and see what the state says, and we come down in an exceedance, eh, and maybe we should pose the letter to the state. That could be something that we come back and say, you know there's a noise exceedance. If this board were to run twenty-four seven, what would the DEP do? Because we were preemptive in our curtailment with the DEP. They were here, they were going to take some kind of enforcement action, or at least that was perceived by this board, or by the town manager, that there was going to be some kind of curtailment, or something of that nature. Because we were preemptive, if I'm not mistaken, by saying that. So we need to find out whether that exceedance would stop us. Those are some issues that we need to look at. That one, you know, and then divide it up. Because I think we need to come up with a short-term, and then a long-term solution.
That's good, but I think we need to start.
We think we start tonight.
We are.
I think we ask the town manager to begin to develop a plan as we outline it. We've said it three or four times. In fact, you've given us a couple of outlines, so I understand the outlines. And if you, if you are comfortable with a discussion in terms of where, where we think we need to go, we can just ask the town manager to respond to that, and let us know in a day or two how, how long it might take, and then we can schedule another meeting.
In so much as what I'd love to see on a straight numbers thing is, we have the full operation as one scheme. The other three operations, because I think removal or relocation is something we can still be looking into. But I would also like to see the difference between a 16-hour, a 12-hour, and 8-hour. And just the, what are the different financial ramifications of each of those? I think it would just be more of a numbers graph kind of thing, and say, what would it cost to do those in comparison to the full?
And quite candidly, I'd like to look at the other part of the option, when, we have that track record because we have a turbine that's adjacent to these, when the wind blows stronger versus less. I mean, it's dark, and people don't really go outside typically in the middle of the winter. But the wind might be blowing, I don't know that. It still might not be a good option to them, but they, you know, it's light out, and they get to enjoy it. So there might be other options there, a flexible curtailment option, I don't know.
I think, are we all in agreement that we want to proceed from the options provided to us by the committee? I think that's, there are a few things here that I want to make sure we clarify before we close. And we've been talking about the options they presented us, we've been talking about information that we have or don't have. Do we want to use this as a starting point? I mean, I've said that I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We originally looked at the idea of removing the turbines, that obviously, the cost for the town to incur that cost, that's not an option. But do we want to still look at that as one of the options here, if we assume, for example, that something happens with the bill that's on Beacon Hill right now? Do we want to just say, okay, these are the options that were presented to the board, obviously, we chose one option, it didn't go through, but nevertheless, we still have these other options? Is this the roadmap that we're using?
I think we-
Or are we going to create a new map?
I think we get all those options back on the piece of paper, as we have, as we have right here. We have them all here. And just expand on them, and put some dollars associated with them, some financial impacts, some neighborhood impacts, whatever they, whatever the staff knows what we're looking for. And I think that, but I think you're right.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. It's exactly what's on the paper. Those are the options that they provided. I'd like to say, I'd like us to look at the relocation option, add that in there, because there may be-
Well, and it was rejected, but that doesn't mean we can't look at it.
Okay.
So, fair to say, though, that this is our roadmap for right now?
It is for me.
All right, okay, so we're in agreement with that. And then, obviously, we've raised questions about the cost of curtailment, the number of hours of curtailment that would cost, if there's any way to do some sort of flexible curtailment. The relocation option was rejected by the committee, but that doesn't mean that we necessarily can reject it.
We should put relocation on there.
And the relocation was relocation to another piece of public property. At no point did they really consider relocation to private property.
True.
And I think that's what's supposed to be suggested.
And that's, there may be that option.
Whether it's, whether the town still owns the turbines and leases the private property is not something that the committee, as far as I know, never considered as an option.
And that's what I'm suggesting is a potential option.
Okay, we now have a, we have a plan.
Okay, so we have a roadmap, we have presented questions. I think if there's any additional questions that any of us have over the next few days or weeks, that we can provide them to staff and try to get answers for them. We convene again, I guess, do we want to, looking ahead, we've talked about having another meeting in, say, August, where we have, where we open it up to other, other groups, committees, invite them in and get feedback. Do we need to do that? Do we want to hear from the public in terms of feedback? Is it just going to be more of the same? I mean, let's be honest, are we going to be, if we allow an open mic, are we just going to hear another parade of people saying, yes, take them down, no, leave them up? Is there anything there that you think is going to help us make a decision?
Can I, I mean, folks in the public have every right to contact us, and they surely have, both pro and con. And I think once we come to where we're going to be making a decision, if we do make a decision, I think that would be appropriate to take the public comment at that time, not and help formulate our decision. Because I think we have, we have the facts now, we need to get more facts. I mean, we know we're going to have a parade of folks, both sides, come up here in an open public meeting, and with all due respect, everyone's entitled to their opinion. And we want those opinions, and we surely have been giving them to us. But I don't think it's going to help the situation to do it here, because we're just going to have a round of applause one way or the other. I think it's constructive.
And that's why I asked the question, because obviously, we have only so many Mondays in a month. And we certainly don't want to spend an entire Monday night getting feedback from people where it's going to be the same thing that we've been hearing already, or where people can provide to us in writing or in phone calls, the same sort of thing that they can get up and say at a microphone. We need to have that time as a board to make decisions and to assemble the information so that we can make those decisions, so...
Well, I was going to say, I think you structure the public comment period. You know, you set aside a certain amount of time for public comment. People have, what, two minutes, three minutes, whatever it is. And when that time is, ends, it ends.
But I think we need to focus, I think, I think we need to make a decision first, and then give them a chance to respond to the decision we're going to make. Or even to, or we narrowed down to two options, and then try to get the feedback.
And structure the public comment period, so that people have a chance.
But how much time would you need for everything we're asking you here?
Three years.
Can you just say...
At this point, my, my rough estimate's 30 days. There's a lot to be looked at, and there are a lot of issues, so I think-
Can you live with that?
Early in August, perhaps.
Okay, early in August then? With everything that we're saying, that we need the information?
Based upon what I, I would know at this point.
Okay. And then come to some decisions and have public comment at that point, okay?
I would just note, if I may, that if, in the process of this, we determine we might need a little more time, if I could so advise the board. So, but that would be, I think, a reasonable...
The chairman did schedule it.
Yeah, we'll, and obviously, the board will be apprised of the status as we move along with all this. Let me toss out another idea, is that, and we did this, obviously, when we originally sat down last year, and we had two meetings. One was where we took the feedback from, where we took, you know, we received the report and the presentation from the options committee. But we didn't take public feedback that evening. And then the next time, we met specifically to get public feedback. Do we want to, and Pat, you sort of suggested this, that maybe we have a meeting just for the sake of getting the public feedback? Because the other thing, too, is we, you know, let's play devil's advocate here. We don't want to simply sound callous, like we're cutting the people off. We genuinely want to get feedback. I think there may be some golden nugget out there that someone can provide to us. Is it worthwhile to have a special meeting, just like we've done here? I mean, obviously, we're having this discussion as a board, but do we want to have a meeting like this and just say, bring on the public feedback, and we'll sit there and we'll listen?
I think it's premature.
Yeah, I think it is, too. I mean, you know, we want to have something meaningful for people to comment on. We also want to give appropriate time to have the comment. And it depends on what we get. And then you can structure the public comment based on what the document looks like when we get it, and how we want to proceed.
And every day, we email the phone call with a golden nugget, we'll share it. Very true.
Yeah.
It's out there.
If you're out there with it, please let us know.
No, I just want to make sure that we're all, you know, that we have, and perhaps it's a little overused, but there's consensus here in terms of how we want to proceed through this process.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I just raise the, during this period, would the board be comfortable with my initiating contact on the rec credits? For instance, that is an issue that has been out there, that, you know, I did not pursue out of respect for the process that we were in. However, I think, my sense is it would be good to renew that, to pursue it and determine whether or not we can secure credits for those recs, because that is a cost that is approaching the town in the near future, we're not yet paying it. And I think we'd be remiss if we did not explore whether those could be waived, and what the conditions would be. But I would need to engage the state in that process to determine that. And if the board is comfortable, I could begin that process as well.
Well, I'm very comfortable with that, because any of the options we choose are going to cost us some money. Whether it's full operation involves purchasing some houses, whether it's curtailment, we're going to need some help, financial help from the state, to be able to run these turbines one way or the other. And so I think it's completely appropriate to ask for forgiveness of those to be able to fiscally move forward in a prudent way.
I agree with that.
So are we comfortable where we are now? That we've got questions, we've got a roadmap, we'll convene again in another month and see what we have? All right. And with that, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're not meeting next week, Greg.
Yeah, we haven't signed the documents either.
Yeah, some of the signature pages went that way, they need to come back. Yeah, and for the public certification, we are not meeting this coming Monday, the 8th. We will be meeting in two weeks. And we wish you all-
So motion to adjourn?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.